Good evening. I'd like to call the North Augusta City Council. Study session for Monday, July the 28th, 2025 to order. It's good to see everybody being here. Thank you. This time I'm going to turn it over to our city administrator, Mr. Jim Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We'll go through our general review first, then we'll go through department details from all the directors, and then we'll move into the focus items, and the vast majority of our focus items tonight are financial based, so Linda and her team will be taken center stage for the majority of tonight. So we'll go ahead and move into the agenda review under new business. First item, item number five, planning and development ordinance number 2025-12, and then the Article nine signs in North Augusta Development Code, Chapter 18, the city of North Augusta, South Carolina, code of ordinance is first reading. And so Tommy Paradise is going to give us a little bit of an update on, you know, what he's specifically asking for based on planning commission input and some of the effects it'll have here in the downtown in Riverside Village quarter. So Tommy, I turn it to you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, basically, the section says that externally illuminated signs and signs in which the letters or graphics or construction of neon tubing is permitted downtown. The planning commission was looking at the signage issues. This is an example of an externally illuminated sign here that you see up there. The planning commission is looking at some alternatives to signage downtown, but when they were reviewing it and found out that halo illuminated, not halo, I'm sorry, I get too confused, the neon was allowed downtown, there was some concern there. If I could go to the next one. And this is an example, a couple of examples of what neon signs look like. They were concerned about the influence, and so this was a planning commission initiative, not something that staff is directing. They directed me to bring a text amendment to the next planning commission for this amendment. So what the amendment does is it deletes the part about the neon signage and just says that externally illuminated signs would be allowed. Questions?
Yes, Mr. Paradise, does that mean in the wording that neon signs then would be considered since it's externally lit, or does it specifically say neon signs are not allowed?
Neon, to me, is internally lit because you have the gas tubing there that heats up and emits from the inside out, so it would not be allowed.
Is the word neon in the ordinance to specifically disallow?
No, sir.
It is not. Should it be?
It has a word neon tubing. Right. And that is, if you wanted to put that in there, you certainly could. If you wanted to prohibit, then you get into, do you want to prohibit it citywide or just downtown mixed use? And this is just for downtown mixed use zoning district that we're talking about. Neon tubing would be allowed in other areas of town, just like any other internally illuminated sign. So this is on Georgia Avenue and a downtown mixed use too.
If, so for example, a business like Parks Pharmacy, it would not be allowed. They're in the downtown district.
Correct.
But CVS, which is up on Georgia Avenue, Knox Avenue, would be allowed.
Correct. Because in their zoning district, they're allowed internal illumination. Parks being in downtown mixed use is not allowed internal illumination.
So Tommy, would halo illuminated be considered externally illuminated and allowed under this, or?
No, sir. Halo illuminated would be, to me, internally illuminated. It shines to the back of the wall and bounces around the letters. This is what brought about this discussion, though, is the planning commission talking about the possibility of halo illumination in the downtown mixed use district. And they are in the midst of the deep dive on those. They have taken me places that surprised me, to be honest with you, and impressed me, you know, as far as colors, levels of brightness, a lot of things that, yeah, really make a difference.
Okay, so point being, right now, all we're trying to do is effectively eliminate the ability to put neon, internally illuminated neon signs in these two, in downtown one and two. More to come on the evolution of that potentially?
Maybe, depending on the planning commission.
Okay.
I don't want to get ahead on them.
Good questions.
Quick question. So what brought this up? You know, just curious.
Well, they had a couple of variance requests downtown.
Some business brought it up.
Business, and the thing was, well, you know, I can't do internally illuminated. I want to do halo, but if I don't do halo, I can do neon. So they wanted, I think, planning commission wanted to take that off the board, and it was important to them that they moved quick on it.
Makes sense.
And that's, and that's what brought it up. It was internally from the planning commission, from those discussions about halo illumination and signage in downtown.
Does this cover, like, signs and windows? Because, you know, like, sixty, seventy percent of small business all have that classic open sign. It is sometimes plastic, but still appears to be neon, but sometimes it's neon.
And I think very seldom now is it neon. Older styles would be, but very seldom. Most of them now are LED, and so it wouldn't really apply, and that's not really what we're going after. You try to use a little bit of common sense and enforcement, and these are the kind of signs that I don't think that you would want downtown, and I could be wrong.
So, just so I'm understanding, we're trying to eliminate the neon, but there's still the possibility that halo may be allowed in the future?
Yes, sir. The planning commission is discussing that. At the last two meetings, they've discussed it. They had a sign man come, or a sign lady come and talk to them, last planning commission, and it's on the agenda to discuss it the next week. And if they get to the point where they want to make a recommendation in the wording, then we'll put it on the, we'll advertise it, and they can vote on it and make a recommendation to y'all, and then y'all can decide yes or no.
Mr. Paradise, and this may be a question also for Mr. Zier. Have we ever had any neon signs downtown? Like, the Mar Theater, did the Mar Theater have one? Not that you know of.
And I promise you, if Mr. Zier don't know.
He was around before the neon signs were created.
Mar Theater might have some.
Right. Yeah, and drugstores typically have them as well.
And I will be honest with you, I rode Georgia Avenue and West Avenue in downtown looking for neon, see if I could find one, and that's why it came off the internet from Charleston and Florence, because we don't have any down there now.
Well, I applaud you and planning commission for being ahead of the curve on this.
That's, that's planning commission.
Maybe.
Anything else?
Thanks, sir. All right, next item for consideration is item number six, under Administration Resolution Number 2025-26, authorizing the donation of a surplus parks and recreation vehicle to the Surtoma Club of North Augusta. So to rewind the tape a little bit, going back into the fiscal year 2025 budget discussions, the Tourism Department had asked for a number of different types of vehicles. Tourism Department also is in receipt of the old parks and rec, you know, miniature bus, the small bus, small seating bus. And so for the last several years, and pretty much during my tenure here as the city administrator, the only use for that bus has been for the Surtoma Club to take students and children up to a summer camp in the upstate of South Carolina, and that's it. But the city has still been bearing the insurance costs, maintenance costs. They complained about the way the bus looks, so they put money into a wrap for the bus. I mean, it's been basically a money suck, because if we're not, we're using it for any other purposes. And so as we went through the budget process last year, we had recommended the disposition of the bus, to remove that bus from the inventory and to buy additional vehicles for the Tourism Department, but those would be different style vehicles, to include pickup truck, which would allow us to move the mobile stage around. And so with that, my initial intention was to, as you knew with all city property, is to go through gov deals and place this vehicle for sale. And in a discussion I had with the mayor and several council members, Surtoma Club had expressed potential interest in taking this vehicle, and as I described, for you and for the general public, that's not a decision I can make as an administrator. It really is a council decision about whether property is going to be sold or whether it's going to be donated. And so what's before you is a resolution to allow the donation of this 2002 bus, which has low mileage for its year, but it's still a coming up on twenty-four year old, you know, model year bus, for the Surtoma Club to take in an as-is condition. They've been responsible for insuring it, for parking it, would not stay on city property, and this resolution allows me to work through the mechanic's view of that transfer to the Surtoma Club, should they be willing to take this vehicle. If they are unable or unwilling to take this vehicle, then it would revert back to the standard procurement policy, which is going through gov deals to place it out for bid. And so that is what's before you, at least on this agenda item, for consideration next week. I'll pause for any questions. Okay, moving on, we'll have our administrative reports, and I am going to, it's listed under administrative reports, but I'm going to request to bump the update on Hurricane Helene recovery efforts to the August 18th meeting, because I believe I'll have more of a closeout style report at that point in time. I actually was out at the Country Club debris site yesterday, and they are, they're on the cusp of being done likely this week with cleaning all that out. There are still a number of other actions to include contract actions on the fencing and on the retention ponds and whatnots, and there's still other actions out there that are ongoing. But I think for the general citizenry, the large actions will be complete by August 18th, and we'll just really be going through a lot of the paperwork aspects at that point in time. So you will not have a hurricane update next week. You'll have one the following council meeting on the 18th. And subject to any questions, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Jamie Paul to go through department details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your department details under finance, the report will be covered under the focus items. And then first up will be Human Resources Manager Kayla Ferguson.
Evening, Mayor and Council. If you look on the back of your employment, or, your department details, you'll see your list of employment opportunities. Thank you.
Next up is Engineering Public Works Director Tom Caesar.
Good evening. The contractor that has been hired to remove the sediment at the River Club pond, that work started last week, and he expects to have all that completed within the next two or three days, definitely this week. Again, he, if there's any calls or concerns, he is responsible for cleaning any sediment off the roadway as he hauls that material off. Also, the detention pond fencing project is underway and nearing completion. That contractor has only four detention pond sites left to complete, and all of those will be in progress to some extent this week, if not completed as well. The SRP roof leak work that's been ongoing for many months, all the construction work is complete. We're just waiting for our weatherproofing consultant to come and do a final inspection, following which we will provide a summary report, again, summarizing the work that was done, as well as the costs that the city has borne for that work. Streets and Drains crews are working to repair some of the boardwalks down at Brick Pond Park. There's several, several of the planks that are weathered and in need of replacement, so that work is ongoing, sort of intermittently, but sections of the boardwalks down there will be closed while that work is taking place. And then it's not on my list here, but I forgot to add it, the Streets and Drains crews are also beginning the process to relocate one of the speed limit display signs that are downtown as requested. We are moving that sign further up Georgia Avenue to near the Forest Avenue, Georgia Avenue intersection. So there's some electrical work that has to be done before we can move that sign and some sidewalk that's been removed in preparation for that, but that's what will be going on there. And so that sign will likely be out of service for a few days while that. And so that sign will likely be out of service for a few days while that transition is, is underway.
Let me just ask you, I know that, I'm sure this is on the list, there's an orange pylon on Lake and West Pine Grove, there's a little, not a sinkhole, but a little drop.
It is.
It has been repaired a couple of times. Is that just, are we going to do that ourselves, or are we just waiting?
We are, yes. Waiting for a, never convenient time, but just a time to open that road up.
Mr. Zeizer, are you finished, Mr. Mayor?
Last thing I was going to ask is, had a citizen ask me about this. If you're going up Hammond Drive, right there, Dennis on the right, is there a way, is that something that we could look at? I'm not saying this makes sense, but a, maybe put a yellow stripe, the split, because what ends up happening is cars will go and they'll take over the whole lane to turn left, and it blocks you from turning right. If there was just a dotted white line or yellow line, is enough space there for that? Is that something we control or is that DOT?
That request has gone to DOT probably multiple times. They maintain that there is not sufficient lane width there to divide it into two lanes per their, per their minimum lane width standards. So they, they will not allow that work to be done.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Zeizer, there's a, there's a bridge on the greenway close to Beck Park, that wooden bridge, as you're heading north, that was in some bad need of repair. Is that, has that been done, or is that on the list?
That's Parks and Rec function councilman, I'll let Rick Meyer talk through that.
Tom, two quick things. So the SRP leak, when's the consultant coming in? Are they scheduled for a certain date?
Yeah, I asked him again to give me a date for that, for that work. So I'm expecting to have that, that date this week for sure.
And I, and I don't know if this is you, it may be public safety, I don't know who it is, but there's speed limit signs in the middle of the road, you know, down West Avenue. Who's in charge of those?
Crosswalk signs.
Yeah.
Our Streets and Drains replaces those frequently.
Yeah, frequently, I just see them busted all the time. I don't know, I mean, are we going to continue doing that, or is there some type of permanent thing that we could do?
You're talking about the pylon, pylons? Yeah, Tom, he's got a warehouse with about twenty of them in there.
I got it. I just didn't know if there's something more economical that we could do.
Mr. Zeizer, there was some construction work on the sidewalks on Marktown Road in Sacaste. There's a contractor, they've left a stack of traffic cones, and they're just kind of piled up on the sidewalk there.
Yeah, that, that, that was a project that was administered by the SC DOT, not the city. So we can remind them again, but we don't really have any control over that work.
Thank you. Next up is planning and development director, Tommy Carter.
Mayor, here I am again. We have the Board of Zoning Appeals next Tuesday night.
Let me just say this for council, not, not for you, Tom. Just in case you get somebody asking, if you're on Pymmont or Parkway, and you're going toward that exit, when you cross over the river, you literally cannot see the sign, anything about North Augusta, whatever. And then if you come down I twenty, and before you get to exit one, literally you cannot see north of it. So I, Representative Hickson's aware of that. He's reaching, we reached out to the SC DOT to spearhead that, to see if we can get that cut back. So just, I'm letting you know, Representative Hickson is the guy. Got pictures, and it's up to him to get DOT to do something. So if you get asked, just answer it. Then Jimmy.
Okay. Next up is public services director, James Sutton.
Good evening, mayor and council. The city was recently awarded a fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar grant in the South Carolina Department of Environmental Services for recycling containers and public educational material. We're planning on spending fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of containers and a tow cart to collect recyclables from the containers. We're going to target the downtown area, continue efforts in this area here, and also along the riverfront greenways and parks, but the exact locations are still being plotted right now. Moving forward, utilities completed water line upgrade on June Street. Replaced approximately three hundred and forty-three feet of inch and a half galvanized plate with six inch PVC. They also installed a fire hydrant, and that water line is active and the customers are connected to it, and it was a substantial improvement for the customers on the flow. And also the system itself and the distribution bit being reinforced for fire protection.
Thank you. Next up is public safety chief Johnson.
Good evening. As you can see listed there, Public Safety will be hosting National Night Out next Tuesday, August fifth, at River View Park from four to eight. This is an opportunity for the police and the community to bridge gaps. We encourage anyone that wants to attend out there to come down there. There will be a lot of, there'll be free food, games for kids, and other entertainment. Also, I'm happy to report to you, we received a ladder truck that we purchased earlier this year, the used truck, and it's in service at Station Three. Still has a few more things to get done to get the striping on it, but it's already in service and ready for use. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Next up is Parks and Recreation Director, Rick Meyer.
Good evening. I have a dog park update. We have two water fountains down the dog park, one in the small animal and one in the large. The one in the large dog is being repaired. The one in the small dog park is way overpriced to be repaired, so we'll look to replace that one. So for the rest of this year, we'll operate with one water fountain, and we have a contracted plumber working to take care of that. Second of all, elevator update at River View Park. If you weren't aware, we failed our inspection on July ninth. Our next inspection date is August thirteenth, and we're pretty close to taking care of all of the code violations, and we feel pretty confident that we will pass the inspection this time on the heels of an elevator modernization. The age of the elevator and all the changes and codes has been the reason for why we did not pass the first inspection. Thirdly, Leroy Hammond Park, we have ordered a new playground slide piece, scheduled to ship out on August the fifteenth to replace the damage. We've gone in there and boarded that up, we taped it up, that didn't last, so we want to make sure we had that closed off to the public. And the last thing I have was River View Park Activity Center and River View Park Update. Just want to give a big tip of the hat to our staff for turning around the Activities Center and River View Park after the Peach Jam. We had it ready to go by Tuesday, completely back in order for our folks. John's got a question.
Mr. Meyer, there's a bridge down.
Yes, yes. So let me answer that. First and foremost, we're not going to go back with any more wooden bridges, okay? So everything moving forward will be kind of like what you had over here off of Waterworks Park, but in this particular location, I'm working, actually working with Tom, potentially replacing that bridge with just pipe and go back with a concrete sidewalk, because I believe that's going to be a better long-term option and cheaper option for us to do. So that's, that's where we're working on that.
Is that in the works prior to Iron Man?
That would be a great question, because it's kind of on the hurricane list if I'm great.
I think practically, councilman, the answer is no. From a time perspective, I don't believe that's a project that's going to get executed before the Iron Man gets here in September.
If you're going to run a lot of runners over that bridge, you better take, really take a close look at it, because it's not in good shape. It is not in good shape. I would take a close look at that.
Yeah.
Even if we have to replace it temporarily, make it usable for that event, and do a permanent solution after that.
I mean, Iron Man, I like to, I'm not sure, where is it located?
It's in Beck Park, near the pavilion, and it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. It's just sunk down, and it's been that way for a good while.
The Iron Man people, you know, they've done their due diligence. I wanted to even say that.
They've ridden over it plenty of times, and golf carts and so forth, but you definitely wouldn't want to roll a truck over it.
I, yeah, I think that probably gets a lot of golf cart use, would be my guess, rather than just pedestrian use.
All right.
And closing out the department details is tourism manager, Cara Waldhaw.
Evening, mayor and council. Tomorrow, the second Explore North Augusta podcast is scheduled to be released, looking to release at about eight, eight o'clock tomorrow morning, and the title of this month's episode is Small Business Big Impact. Eight oh three day celebration in partnership with the Green Jackets scheduled for this Sunday. First pitch for the Green Jackets game is one thirty-five with a concert following Sharon Jones Amphitheater with the Swing Medallions playing. We're expecting that concert to take place about four thirty or so. Lastly, Riverfront Theater Company is presenting Forever Plaid at Community Center. They loaded in yesterday, place looks great. They got three performances weekend, Friday and Saturday evening, and a matinee on Sunday afternoon starts at three. It's kind of perfect timing when that ends to go ahead and trickle down the amphitheater and catch the Swing Medallions.
Look, Cara, let me just say, just for folks on the podcast, that's going to be done, Brad Pond of Cavaliers and Tia Harville of The Grove. And just a couple of points, I think you, I hope people listen, be very informative. There's good conversation, Brad does a really wonderful job. You've heard us talk about density, and why we don't get a lot of the big businesses we do, and he does a good job of talking about how small businesses in our town are able to fill a lot of, a lot of opportunities that are out there, that reason why big businesses may not come to North Augusta, and the importance of a small business. And the second thing is, what was very meaningful to me was hear both of them talk a lot about the, the love and the reason why they're doing what they're doing, because small businesses are not a huge moneymaker, it is a huge investment. But there's a lot of talk about the love and the heart of giving back to your community. So I would just tell you, I was, we actually had them like the fourth, the fifth one we were going to bring, and after we recorded it, I told Cara, I said, man, I said, this, this is a great one. They did a fantastic job. So I would just tell you, very informative, so listen to it or watch on YouTube, I think it'd be very cool. Really good job.
Thank you. With that, that closes department details. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Clifford.
I'll turn it over to Linda.
Good evening, council. We've recently just finished our twenty-twenty-four audit, and our auditor is Malden and Jenkins, and Grant Davis is here to provide y'all the presentation of our twenty-four audit.
Well, thank you all, mayor and council, for having me to go over the results of our twenty-twenty-four audit of the city. Again, my name's Grant Davis, I'm a partner with the firm Malden and Jenkins out of Columbia. Obviously prepared a PowerPoint here to, to give you sort of the, the higher level details of the, the process ultimately, certainly a little bit. Maybe it'd be good if we could go to the next slides, since I'll have, just have to look at this again here in just a moment, but just a brief agenda here, tell you a little bit again about who we are as a firm and our engagement team, certainly the results of the audit. Some very, very, very high level financial trends. I just do this to, to really break it up so that it's not super dry. And then there are a few comments and other matters that I'll go through, and please don't feel like you got to wait to ask questions. I'm happy to answer them as we go, to the extent you have any. But I ultimately mentioned one other thing. We've issued two documents as a part of the audit process. One belongs to you, one is the city's financial statements themselves, and our opinions are within that document. There are three reports within the document that I'll mention in just a second, but the, the second document, trying to not get, be confusing with the number of things that we've issued here, but the second document is a document we call our auditor's discussion and analysis document. That's our own terminology, but at the conclusion of any audit, our professional standards require that we communicate certain things to you all, either verbally or in writing. I'll do, we're going to do a little bit of both. So there'll be obviously the shorthand version of these required communications are in this, this PowerPoint. The long version is in the auditor's discussion and analysis document, which is about thirty pages long, all in. And then, like I said, I'll mention some of these things as we go. But I won't read this slide to you again, just to follow our table of contents or agenda. This is just a little bit information about who we are as a firm. Only thing I'll say here is the governmental practice is a significant portion of what we do as a firm. So you can see the numbers there, one hundred and fifty-six thousand hours over seven hundred governments across the country that we serve, and it's all I do, for better or for worse. I just work with governments. So you can pity me or congratulate me, whatever.
Now, let me interrupt you, just for our new council members, let them be aware, we, we don't have an auditor, and we have them for twenty years. I think our timeframe is three or five years that we rebid it out. So I think that's important for citizens, we ought to understand that there's a set number of years, and then we go to somebody else or whatever. I think it's important for citizens to know we're not with somebody for twenty years or whatever.
Certainly. On the next slide, we'll kind of get into sort of our, the results of the audit certainly, but our responsibilities, and ultimately, we've conducted or did conduct the city's audit in accordance with two sets of standards, really. It's GAS and GAS. So those are the acronyms, it's generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. Of course, government auditing standards are unique to governmental entities. We issued an opinion certainly on the city's financial statements, and it was an unmodified or a clean opinion on those financial statements, and that's not glamorous language, but that's really the only acceptable, from my perspective, I think, and really from yours, I think that's the only acceptable result in a financial statement audit. And that's the first of the three reports that we issued in the great big, you know, hundred-plus page annual comprehensive financial report. It's at the front of the document. The second two report, or the, the two, the second and third report, I should say, are all the way at the back of the document. So if you happen to be flipping through, trying to figure out what, what I'm talking about or where these are, the second of three reports in the annual comprehensive financial report is a report we call our Yellow Book Report. I know that doesn't mean anything to you all, but it's our report on internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, grant agreements, so forth and so on. That report is not designed to offer an opinion like the first one that I mentioned was, but to provide what we call negative assurance, which is to say, that as a part of planning and ultimately conducting our audit in accordance with GAS and GAS that I mentioned earlier, if we identify any instances of non-compliance or any internal control deficiencies, we are required to communicate those to you all. And so I'm happy to report that we did not identify any instances of internal control deficiencies or non-compliance to report. So the second of two reports is also a clean report, it's just not offering an opinion. On the next slide, you'll see the third and final report. So this is a compliance report, and it does offer an opinion, or provide an opinion. This is what we call a single audit report, so you're probably familiar, but anytime you ultimately expend, and it's important that I say expend, over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federally sourced money in a given calendar year, then it triggers a compliance audit. The Federal Office of Management Budget issues a document that they call the Compliance Supplement that is really, really long and covers all the required elements for compliance with the terms of the grants that you all may receive from a federal agency. Ultimately, we conducted this single audit on one, what we call major federal program, and it's, major programs are determined by the dollar amount, but it's what you probably referred, or have heard referred to as the ARPA program. Its technical name is the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, but that, that individual program was seven point three million dollars for the year to twenty-twenty-four. That's, I don't remember off the top of my head, but that's probably just about the last bit of this ARPA money that you all have. But anyway, we already did that. We have issued another clean opinion and unmodified companion, opinion on compliance. So all three reports are good reports. You will note here, I'll just mention this, just to be clear, in case somebody has a question, you'll see on the second bullet there that I've said that. uh, bullet there that I've said that we, uh, the city was not a low risk auditee. That's not anything that the city has any control over. Uh, basically there are certain federal requirements about how frequently you've had single audits in the past that allow you to be a low risk auditee or a not, they don't ever call them high risk. You're either low risk or not low risk. So the city was not a low risk auditee, which means we had to audit more federal expenditures. Um, just really, again, just due to the frequency historically of, uh, single audits.
Grant, if I may, just, uh, for the council members as well, so even though that's probably the largest individual, uh, calendar year chunk of ARPA in two thousand and twenty four, there are still going to be twenty twenty five expenditures. So for example, we have the, uh, the trial that we took delivery of this year and some other minor projects that'll close out in twenty twenty five. But we'll also have projects that will be closing out in twenty twenty six, uh, that I would say have to do mostly with infrastructure. So the, the wastewater infrastructure project will close out in twenty twenty six. As well order amendment. So the Carolina lift station, the eight inch, uh, pipe. And lastly, for public safety, the, um, tanker truck should arrive in twenty twenty six. So I would, I would anticipate you'll have this style slide uh, for two more audits, uh, for both twenty twenty five and for twenty twenty six, uh, respectively going forward.
Certainly. Um, on the next slide, we get to the, what I, what, again, what I referred to originally is the required communications. And, uh, this is not all of them. These are the ones that I thought were the most important. And I'm certainly not going to read all of this to you, but just try to give you a few, few highlights. The significant accounting policies of the city are described in the footnotes to the financial statements. Again, that's that document. That's the annual comprehensive financial report. Um, for the year ended December thirty one, twenty twenty four, we had to implement two new accounting standards. So the GASB, the governmental accounting standards board is the authoritative body for accounting guidance for governments. And, uh, it has continued to issue standards, uh, pretty frequently over the last decade or so. And again, we had to implement two new standards. Um, this year, the really, the only significant one was compensated absences. The way that that, um, that balance was calculated was significantly altered, uh, from the way it was historically reported. So, uh, there's certainly disclosure in the footnotes that talks about all that to the extent anybody has insomnia. Um, management's judgments and accounting estimates are a, a, really a big part of the audit process. The financial statements include a variety of estimates. Uh, some that you would probably think about and some that you probably wouldn't, but ultimately our, our role in the audit is to evaluate what we call inputs and outputs, which are the quantitative and the qualitative aspects of how management has ultimately come up with estimates within the financial statements. And as just an example, the useful life of a truck is an estimate. The useful life of a building is an estimate. The discount rate that is applied to the net pension liability is an estimate. So these are just, the allowance for uncollectible accounts is ultimately an estimate. So those are just some of the types of things that are estimates within the city's financial statements. And again, ultimately we have evaluated those, uh, and, and believe they're appropriate. Uh, on the next slide, the financial statement disclosures, which you probably refer to as the footnotes, just seem to go on and on and on and on and on. Um, in the documents, page after page, ultimately the form and content of those footnotes have not changed significantly from twenty twenty three. Certainly the numbers have changed, the dates have changed. There's a new standard that I mentioned a moment ago that was implemented that's disclosed. But other than that, if you open them up side by side, you're not going to see a lot of variation except for those obvious items. Uh, I'm happy to say we had a great relationship with management throughout the audit. We didn't have any uh, issues in terms of timeliness, which has gotten to be a bigger deal post COVID. Um, we had full cooperation from, from everybody on the city's, from the city's perspective. Uh, and conducting the audit, which is obviously important. Again, no disagreements on accounting matters or financial reporting matters. So I think these are all very important things to mention. Um, audit adjustments, we did not have any what we call past adjustments, which is to say we did not identify any items that were technically incorrect and then decide to pass on adjusting those because maybe they were immaterial or something like that. So no past adjustments. Um, on the next slide, just a few more things here. I won't read most of this to you, but I will say we are independent as required by our professional standards. Um, with respect to the city throughout the period of having conducted the audit. After this, on the next slide is just some, again, very, very high level financial highlights. You can find any, of course, I'm rounding, but you can find any of these things, uh, within the document itself. And I just, these are things that are interesting to me. They may not be interesting to you all, but I, these are things that I would want to know, I think, if I were in your position. So this slide is the, is, is the balance sheet for the city as a whole, all funds, all activities put together. Uh, and again, I'm not going to read every single piece of it to you and, and, but within the sub bullets, there are obviously other types of assets. If you add these two together, cash and capital assets, you can get three hundred and twelve million dollars. I just picked out some bigger ones again, that I thought you'd be interested in seeing, but total assets, three hundred and twelve million dollars, total liabilities, a hundred and twenty five million dollars gives you net position in the governmental world is equity. Um, so net position of a hundred and seven, eighty seven million, and that's broken down in those three categories. The net investment and capital assets is what it sounds like. It's your capital assets minus any accumulated depreciation on those assets, minus any debt that's outstanding that was issued to acquire those assets. So that's what that figure is. And it's obviously the largest piece of your equity puzzle. Um, and then restricted net position, twenty six million unrestricted, two million. Um, on the next slide, this is just a income statement for the city as a whole. Again, all funds, all activities. This in the governmental world is called the statement of activities and it's really a bizarre statement to look at if you've never looked at one before. You start on the left side, you go to the right and then you go top to bottom. Uh, but the basis from this statement here, I guess the, the big takeaway is total revenues, eighty one million dollars. Expenses, fifty three million dollars gives you an increase in net position of twenty eight million dollars for the year ended twenty twenty four. Um, on the next slide, I did sort of something similar, but just with the general fund. Typically the general fund is what everybody's interested in. And I've got a few slides. I don't want to chart you to death, but just to prepare you, there are a few slides with some charts that show revenues, expenses. Um, things like that that we're, I will certainly look at, but assets of the general fund, eight million, I, I will highlight six point six million of the eight is cash. So you got a very liquid balance sheet. Uh, liabilities of three point three million gives you fund balance, which is just a, a, a different uh, basis of accounting, equity on a different basis of accounting for the general fund of this four point seven million. And you can see how that's broken down. The sixty days of fund balance, what I did was I just took your total expenditures in the general fund, which you can see below twenty seven million dollars and divided that by twelve, like twelve months. That means the general fund spends about two point two million dollars a year. And if we use that and try to back into how much fund balance that is, it's basically two months. Basically got two months of fund balance at December thirty one, twenty twenty four. Um, and that's sixty days if you didn't take in another dollar, right? You could operate on the level that you did in twenty twenty four for sixty days before you took in another dollar. Um, again, I just mentioned expenditures of twenty seven million, but total revenues, twenty six million. Fund balance decreasing the general fund by about a million dollars. Uh, very briefly on revenues, taxes and business licenses. I'm sure as you're probably already aware, make up about seventy five percent of the general fund's revenues. Taxes about forty percent or forty one, I guess to be exact. And business licenses and other types of permits, about thirty three percent. So that's seventy five percent of your revenues. And interestingly enough, that's about seventy five percent of your year. So that's about nine months of your revenues are coming in in those two buckets, which are not coming in. Think about it from a cash flow perspective. These are not revenues that are coming in at a, at a, basically a standard or a typical amount, month after month after month. You're getting big buckets of property taxes right at the beginning of the year, and then your business licenses are all due for renewal by April thirtieth, I think. Yeah, April thirtieth is right. That's been standardized across the state. So in the first four months of the year, you're getting seventy five percent of your revenues that have to carry you around the rest of the year back, back to property tax time again. Um, so anyway, just a little flavor on, uh, revenues there. Uh, the next slide is a pie chart and this just sort of demonstrates what I just mentioned. Property taxes is the red slice, licenses and permits primarily led by business licenses is the orange slice. Um, and the next slice, uh, sorry, not slice, slide is, uh, expenditures of the general fund. The, the darker ones, I know it's kind of hard to see the colors against the background, at least it's for me, but general government is blue with the eight million. Uh, public safety is, uh, the purple at eleven million. Those are pretty typical slices in a city government. Uh, not a lot of variation year over year. So again, just something to look at. And I won't take a whole lot of more of your time, I promise. But on the next couple of slides, like I said, I always have to be careful that I'm, you know, to me, one more chart always makes a big difference. To most other people, you know, it's not very helpful. So, uh, hopefully you'll get something out of it. But this next chart is five years. Yeah, five years of basically inflows and outflows in the general fund. So blue is money coming in, red is money going out. Just so you can line that up. And so you, I mean, you're basically flat over the, the history of, uh, in twenty twenty going through the end of twenty twenty four. And then the following slide is how fund balance in the general fund has changed over the last five years. So you can see how that's moved up and down in various degrees and ways. Um, going back to twenty twenty. Last few things I'll mention here, uh, comments and other matters on the next slide. There are, as I mentioned earlier, the GASB is the authoritative body for setting accounting policies and principles for governments. They've continued to be active and we'll have to implement a new standard for the year ended, uh, December thirty one, twenty twenty five. And, uh, you can see this is, uh, the, the second kind of bullet and sub bullets are all items on their technical agenda to update. This is a, that, that it continues to add up over time. They continue to add more and more things. Uh, last few things I'll say, and I think I've already said that a couple of times. Um, on the next slide, we offer free continuing education to our clients. Happy to have you. I will say not very many, uh, city council members or mayors come hang out with us for our continuing governmental accounting education, but we'd love to have you and I always like to offer it. Um, we meet quarterly online and, uh, we usually have three or four hundred people that show up to talk about, um, you know, governmental topics. And then the, the next slide before I really am done, uh, is just, uh, uh, again, we offer a variety of advisory services to the extent that that's something that you're ever in a, a need for. But I will mention, um, yeah, I, I don't think I said much about the annual comprehensive financial report. It is for the new members here. The annual comprehensive financial report is above and beyond financial reporting. So it's what is done in excess of what the state requires, what your bondholders require, uh, things of that nature. So you have received the certificate for a number of years in a row. I don't remember off the top of my head how many it has been consecutively. But, um, that certificate, the twenty twenty three certificate is in twenty twenty four. The, the big document, twenty twenty four has already been submitted to the international body, the Government Finance Officers Association for them to grade. They provide fee, but it is a, you're not just paying for certificate. I mean, it is a, really a rigorous review process that the document undergoes. And as a part of all that, I just want to thank Linda and her group, uh, for everything that she did, again, to facilitate a smooth audit process, especially in light of the various transitions on the software side that you all are undergoing. Um, couldn't, couldn't have asked for anything better from our perspective.
All right. I'll let you go. Um, I know you don't have a comprehensive report probably with you.
I don't.
So I just want to make sure the bar chart you showed. I just want to make sure I'm correct that, uh, right there. So that correlates to page twenty. And, and on page eleven, you do a write-up that says the over expenditures for the general government, public safety were due to unexpected restrictions related to Hurricane Helene cleanup. Overtime parks wreck was due to increase of large athletic tournaments and public works was under budget due to savings resulting from positions. So those are those numbers on the far right, that variance, right?
Uh, no.
On twenty?
No, sir. The, so we're in two different documents. This, this chart is something that I copied out of our auditor's discussion and analysis document. Now, it sounds like what you're referring to. What you're referring to is within the annual comprehensive financial report.
That's what it is, yeah.
Yeah. And that's, you're in the management's discussion and analysis. So we created our document as a play on that to give you our required communications. These charts, this is just the general fund over five years. What you're referring to on, on page eleven is a, is a budgetary, uh, comparison of what.
Page twenty is what I'm saying.
Page twenty.
Those numbers came from page twenty because they line up in the next slide.
So did, did the numbers on, on page a lot discussed on eleven come from twenty? Is that your question?
That's one thing. It has to.
Yes, sir.
But my, what I'm saying is when I'm looking through this, I just want citizens to understand the reason if you look at page twenty, you're given explanation of why general government, why that number, you know, revenues are up. Expenditures were higher. And my next thing is just, we have new council members, transfers in and transfers out. I'm assuming the transfers in shows when we bring that money in from a river core fund and the transfers out, the one minute point nine million is that, uh, is the extra that we put back in the capital projects fund each year?
I, I don't know the, the nature of the individual amounts where that we, we could look it up in this document to see where it went to and where it came from.
What I'm saying, I'm just trying to understand there's a, you have a negative one million. So I'm trying to understand that number for citizens.
So Linda may have some visibility on that as well, but I'll take a stab at it, which is the city had and has, uh, outflows associated with a hurricane helene response. So as we pay, um, city, uh, personnel overtime, as we pay SDR and Tetra Tech contractors to, you know, haul out debris, as we pay R and R train service, uh, to do, R and R just by themselves is almost a million dollars, uh, which I believe we paid in December of twenty twenty four or January twenty five. So we're going to have outflows, uh, ex, that exceed our expenditures this year or correction to twenty twenty four. And if we get reimbursed fully in twenty twenty five, we should be able to balance those, you know, inflows and outflows by the end of the calendar year. If FEMA reimbursements and South Carolina reimbursements also flow into the following fiscal year, we're going to see an imbalance there until basically our, you know, amount, our outflow for hurricane response and our inflows, you know, even now. And as we've done some of our very initial math based on, um, you know, the large contracts we're doing, not all the, the small numbers, but the big contracts. Uh, and understanding the timeline for FEMA reimbursement and also South Carolina reimbursement. We feel like we're in a very good position right now to come close to lease break and even, uh, for the, the outflow of, you know, funds for hurricane really versus what the inflows are going to be from our reimbursements from both federal and state agencies.
All right. So that's the clarification is a transfer.
Did I make a lot more or some sense to y'all?
It makes a lot more than one point nine. So we had net of one million, but again, we haven't been reimbursed. So I just, I just want
Yes.
People to understand what happens to look at.
And I can answer the question on the transfers. So, um, that one million coming out of the general fund is definitely that money we put into capital projects from the previous year. Um, also the enterprise funds pay the general fund. So you will see transfers coming in and transfers out and that to cover things like HR, IT and things like that, that the general fund pays for. And then the enterprise fund essentially pays us their portion back.
But we're, we're, we're in a good place, even though people see that negative one million because again, we have those outflows with, um,
with yes.
Hurricane will get reimbursed.
Yeah, we expect that to come back up in the next couple of years.
Right. So I wouldn't expect that you, so you might see a very similar graph in twenty twenty five might. Uh, where you have more out, outflows and, and inputs as far as from a financial perspective. But that's going to entirely depend on the rate in which and the timing of which you receive reimbursement from, uh, FEMA and from S E M D. And quite frankly, for us to only be at a one million imbalance based on the amount of work and the debris we've had here in the city is actually a, a pretty good place to be. And we've had the ability to absorb that, as you saw on the financial statement, based on the cash reserves. Uh, so it didn't cripple our city as we were going through. So overall, it's still, I know it isn't as I tell a great story in and of itself when we look at one year, uh, but that really, we are in a good position fiscally, uh, this year and also going forward.
This is a great document. It's well written. And, uh, anybody can read that. And I didn't have, anyway, very good.
Well, this, this is, again, this is your document. This is, that especially the management's discussion analysis section is written by your management. So congratulations for an excellent document. Certainly.
Yeah. I, I, I have a question. This might be an oversimplification for a question, but probably comes from my, uh, lack of expertise in the financial world. But, um, our assets that we have that you showed us roughly a hundred and twenty six million, is that what it was? And then, and then part of our statement, you had talked about depreciation sum where some of them are predictable, some of them are not. What, what was the depreciation value of the year?
So like depreciation expense, what did you charge?
What did we charge?
Uh, let's see.
I know we had some, uh, vehicles, probably some fire trucks or things that were beyond their use, probably fully depreciated.
So if you look at, yeah, if you look at page forty and forty one, if you have it in front of you, you've got basically two tables, forty and forty one. You're, page forty is what are called your governmental activities. And again, to not get way, I can get way. your governmental activities. And again, to not get way, I can get way down in the weeds, and I'm going to try not to do that. Your governmental activities are your governmental type funds. So these include all the funds that are not enterprise funds. This is not your water and sewer, not your stormwater, not your sanitation. So the governmental type funds charged almost $6 million in depreciation expense on a value of $230 million. Your enterprise funds, which again is water, sewer, sanitation, stormwater, that's right, charged nearly 3 million on a value of about 130 million.
So 3%, roughly 3. Wouldn't that sound normal?
All, all in is you're looking at close to $9 million on whatever that is, 240 million.
That sounds like an appropriate number.
Well, I mean, so it's going to vary, especially because, I mean, you can see, if you look at pages 40 and 41, your buildings, for example, are going to have a long useful life, probably 20, 30 years. I don't know exactly. Whereas-
Better be 50, yeah.
It could be longer than that, right. So very, very long time to depreciate those. While your furniture and fixtures doesn't have a long life, you know, your vehicles. What's unique, at least in the last couple of years, is there has been, we had to adopt a new accounting standard that's called GASB 96. Basically, what it made us do was recognize an asset for the right to use, either lease assets, so you leased an asset from somebody else, and you record, it's really bizarre, but you have to record a capital asset from that. And then there's a second, a separate one, a separate type, where you record a subscription. So this is like for software. So if you subscribe to a software, it's an agreement that's more than a year long, then you've got this asset now that you've got a, it's depreciated, called amortized, over the life of that agreement. So you've got, for example, we had right-to-use subscription assets of $1 million that were added in this year. And they're going to depreciate very, very fast. Software, you're only going to add for maybe two or three, you're going to have for two or three years before that agreement ends. And then you get a new agreement, and you have a new asset, so forth and so on. So-
That number looks more like 100,000 instead of a million?
No. If you look at right-to-use subscriptions, on, like on page 40, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 columns. In the second column, right-to-use subscriptions had additions of 700,526. Depreciation expense was 140,105. If you go to the next page, on page 41, same concept, you've got 439, 226 additions, and then 80, almost 88,000 depreciation or amortization. But that's not taken in consideration that this is not a full year of amortization on those. This is some partial year because it was added this year. So to answer your question, some things are going to depreciate very, very slowly. Some things are going to depreciate very, very rapidly, like these subscriptions. So in light of that, yeah, we wouldn't have issued it in our opinion if we didn't think it was appropriate.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And just want to thank Linda for your team for another great year, everything. Really appreciate it.
All right. Good evening. I have our second quarter update on the Riverside Village. As we've talked about before, these updates are voluntary, and the decision was made back in 2019 by council to provide a timelier update, update on the financing related to Riverside Village. This first paragraph that you see is voluntary disclosure that we put onto our report. This language was recommended by our bond council, and it's included on every single report that we submit to Emma. Again, this report has been published to Emma, and that is our electronic municipal market access. And you can find that at www.emma.msrb.org. And if you will search North Augusta Public Facilities Corporation, you will see all of our filings that we have done. We are required to do an annual filing, which we have completed. We did that right after we got our audit back in June. Next slide. All right. This chart is included in our statistical section of the annual financial report. It's been updated to, to show the assessed values for all real and personal property for the tax year 2023 and the prior four years. Again, taxes assessed in 2023 were collected in the fiscal year of 2024. Next slide. This one is our tax rate table for the year, fiscal year 2025, so tax year 2024. We did not have an increase in our tax rate. We did do millage increases in tax year 22 and tax year 23. Those millage increases helped to increase additional personnel for the city, as well as bring all city wages up to close to what the inflation rate was post-COVID. And this also allowed us to purchase vehicles and equipment outright instead of financing those. Next table. This is just a copy of our 2025 general fund budget. It's just something that's required to be in the report that we submit to Emma, and they ask for it to be in a separate table. Next slide. This chart is the 10 largest taxpayers in the city. Just want to note that the two Riverside Village owners are still, are continuing to be in this group, Brable, which is the Ironwood Apartments, and also Ackerman Greenstone, which is the developer. I expect that to, even though with the sale of the development, we will see that name change, but the properties will still be in, on that chart for, I think, for next year when you see this. Next slide. All right. Tax collection for the city. Once again, this is also in our statistical portion of our financial reports. And we are continuing to collect over 99% of our levied taxes in the same fiscal year that they are levied. Prior year shows some tax collections in 2020, that was only 91%. And that was due to some Riverside Village unpaid taxes from 2019 that were actually paid in fiscal year of 2021. So we got that caught up, and we are at 99.59% on that collection. And the other collections that you see in the collections in subsequent years are usually merchant taxes, because we tried to get those collected before they renew their business license in the next year. Next slide. All right. This is our outstanding debt. And just wanted to point out a few things. This includes our capital lease that we have for vehicles and equipment. So we will continue to pay on leases through 2027. We did not issue a lease in 2025. So last year, this table had four years on it. Now we have three years.
So for the council, just as we go, starting deliberations on the general fund budget for calendar fiscal year 2026, the city made a decision several years ago to get out of the lease purchase business. The lease purchase agreements made a lot of sense for the city fiscally when interest rates were at 2% or below. But as inflation has crept up and inflationary costs have started to squeeze interest rates, it became less advantageous for us to be spending our general fund dollars on interest for vehicles. So we have moved pretty aggressively to go to outright purchase of vehicles over the last several years. And so, you know, depending on how the fiscal constraints are going forward, our intention is to continue to do so, so that you'll see, you know, lease debt, your interest come off the ledger. But as Linda correctly pointed out, you can see how much it significantly drops year over year. So it's not that those vehicle requirements still don't exist, but we're trying to get away from paying interest on loans, especially as those interest rates remain high. And we can look at that year to year. So as interest rates ratchet, and they potentially go back down at some point in time, it may be advantageous for us to go into lease purchase. But under the current circumstances, our view of the world is we ought to get into outright purchase. And so that's what you see there under outstanding indebtedness.
And the, the rest of what you see is related to our debt on Riverside Village, the public safety headquarters, and also the utilities. I just want to point out real quick that the North Augusta Public Facilities Corporation purchased the city's 2017 A TIF obligation. That's that $41 million fine item you see there. And continues to make semi-annual payments to the corporation from the TIF revenues for that. Those payments are assigned to the trustee for the Series 2017 B bonds, and provide a credit against installment payments over each year. Now, the total debt on Riverside Village is the $65 million figure that you see there. This is also reflected on page 42 in the 24 audit under the long-term debt note. And just to brief mention that the Waterworks Series 2014 A and 2015 A bonds were refunded in '21. And that's the balance left on that. That's that 13 million. Next slide. Quick information. This table is just our general obligation bond. We did this one for the public safety headquarters. And because this went on a referendum, we still have our entire borrowing capacity of 8% available to us. For year ending 2024, our outstanding debt was the 5.2 million. We made our payment in February of 2025 for this year, so we are now down to about 3.5 million. And just wanted to say that the total debt reduction for '24 in governmental funds was 3.3 million, and enterprise funds was 1.7 million. We did not issue any additional debt, and we are currently not financing equipment and vehicles at this time. So our city's overall debt was reduced by a little more than $5 million in 2024. Next slide. All right. Hospitality taxes. Total collections for '24 was 2.7 million. And you'll see that was an increase over the prior year of about 6.3%. For 2025, we've collected almost 1.5 million so far. We are up about 4.8% from this exact same time from 2024. We're continuing to see a trend of hospitality doing well in the city. And just as a reminder, of the 2% fee that we issue, only 1% is currently designated for debt service. Next slide. All right. Our accommodations tax. This tax represents all accommodations tax that we are currently collecting in the city. However, the Crown Plaza is the only one that's dedicated to debt service. We cannot put that out there in a public forum, because you can get back to their gross sales. So we don't want to do that. For 2024, we collected almost 500,000, which was an increase of almost 36%. Again, just to remind you that True Hotel at Exit 5 came online in 2024. So they are contributing to that accommodations tax now. And you can see it's, it really, it doubled our collections, or doubled the percent of increase in our collections.
And Linda, if I could, just as a reminder for, especially for our new council members, the accommodations taxes are governed by state statute about how those can be distributed. So these do not go directly into the general fund. You can't, for example, buy a firetruck with local ATAX, as we call it, ATAX. Can't use it to fund public safety fire vehicles or things along those lines. I know Councilman Philak has, you know, got experience on ATAX committee. There are set rules about how accommodations tax is collected, and also, just as importantly, how it's distributed. So you get recommendations from an ATAX committee. It comes through the city council, and then is ultimately distributed through a council vote about how those funds go. But there's a lot of rules associated with tourism especially on how ATAX is used. So just as a reminder for the new, new folks, again, I can't necessarily say, hey, I want to take, you know, several hundred thousand dollars out of this and defray the cost of a new police car, or, you know, some other kind of capital item within, you know, our utilities. It has to be used in a very set way as laid out in state statute.
Yes. And both hospitality and accommodation taxes go straight into our Riverfront Central Core Fund. They never touch the general fund. And just to remind, our tax rate is 3% for the city, and our current collections are up about 27% from this quarter last year. So again, I think that's True Hotels helping out with that. And we're, I mean, the city's just really doing well on accommodations and hospitality taxes. So people are visiting and coming and enjoying themselves. They're exploring North Augusta.
Let it go, Carl.
Next slide. Okay. These are our tax increment revenues. So this is all tax revenues, even from the county. So this includes county and city TIF revenues. We had a collection of a little over 3.8 million in 2024, which was an 11% increase over the prior year. That is an indication of growth in that TIF district area. Currently in 2025, we've collected 3.2 million. We are right in line with where we were at this time last year. But we'll say that since the county issues their bills in October and they're due January 15th, we'll see another distribution of TIF revenues in December. So we'll see another little chunk come in before the end of the fiscal year. So we won't have that update till first quarter of next year. And just, also, we also have an intergovernmental agreement with Aiken County and the school district. And we have a payment of around 350,000 that we must pay back to them every year. We have made that payment in May, and it is reflected in that 3.2 million. So that has come out of the revenue we collected. And next slide. Mid-assessments. The mid-assessments are a special assessment added to the undeveloped properties in Riverside Village. It's set on an annual basis, and it's an amount that equals the estimate of the TIF revenues had that property been developed. Council approves the special assessment by a resolution every January, and the fees are added to the tax bills prior to those bills going out in the mail. And our total mid-assessment for tax year 2024, collected in '25, was 736,523. And I'm happy to announce that all mid-payments were paid, and they were paid on time. Next slide. Parking. Okay. So this one is going to look really different from past few years. At this time, the hotel has changed hands. So the previous owner did send us a lump sum of what they felt that they owed us for the parking revenues. So that's included in that $179,000 that you see collected in 2024. And that's the reason why it's so high, that you guys have just done the resolution to use that to help with some of the pedestrian traffic issues down at the stadium. And we are currently working with the current owner, and we've started receiving parking revenues from them. And so, right now, we're sitting at a positive number, which is great. And I just want to remind you that this $9,000 is a net revenue, not a gross revenue. So we have expended some costs associated with the parking debt down there, and right now, that's where we're sitting. I feel pretty good about that number since it's positive. And next slide. These are our stadium revenues. So this reflects, sorry. We'll start with the emissions tax. So the emissions tax, we receive it directly from the state Department of Revenue, and it is based off the Green Jackets ticket sales. We usually do not see much money until about August, because the state's year-end is June 30th, and they usually close everything down for the whole month of July. So we'll see that increase dramatically in the next update. The Green Jackets have been making all their payments as they should. We received the performance license fees in January, and that's usually for the year prior. They've made their rent payments, and then they make their corporate naming right payment in December of the year. So we will expect that. And that pretty much concludes my update for tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Looks good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for the GIF that keeps on giving, let's talk about utility updates. No change in this slide. Next slide. So really, for the billing dates, the June 25 bills were mailed on the date as indicated above, and the due date, I believe, was for the 1st of August. We've got July 10 bills that went out on time. Those due dates are also accurate. And then we have July 25. And then we have July 25th bills, which should be mailed by Wednesday, uh, with the approximate due date of August 22nd, as I briefed last time. Uh, and so I know we had a, a lot of traffic in the, uh, the lobby today. So some of the lessons learned we got on that is as we have a due date, uh, we're gonna up the manning in the, uh, the lobby, uh, to include on the outside. We had really good luck during the initial phases of this where we had non-finance personnel put out on the lobby floor to help direct traffic and answer initial questions and be able to do some triage, if you will. Uh, and so we instituted, we instituted that again this morning after we saw the lines start to come up. And so what we're seeing is, uh, a lot of folks are coming in on the, the actual due date. Uh, so that's why we're getting a lot of, a lot of extra folks. And then a lot of the questions come down to is, you know, why am I getting two bills in one cycle? And the reality is, uh, people weren't getting bills timely in the February, March, uh, into early April timeframe, and now the billing cycles are starting to catch up. So at the end of the day, you're gonna have, um, likely getting two bills in the mail, uh, within the span of a 30-day window. Uh, and those bills are gonna be accurate and are accurate based on the data that we have, uh, but still need to be paid. But again, we are not assessing late fees, and we're not doing cutoffs until we can fully stabilize. We're back onto our normal, uh, billing timeline. Next slide. So again, as you see here in the billing cycle, uh, we've got, uh, bills that are going out. Uh, and then we've got, uh, bills that'll be mailed out here in the August timeframe. And really, the, the goal for us is to get back onto glide path, as you see there on August 8th. And that's when we're anticipating of getting out the August 10th bills. And you're gonna see that, you know, in the span of three weeks, there were three sets of bills going out. So some people are gonna get, you know, two bills in a, you know, three-week, you know, period. Uh, but when we get onto the August cycle, well, the August 10th bills will go out on the 8th, which is the normal timeline, and then we'll go into August 25th. And again, uh, no shut-offs and no late fees are being assessed. Uh, and, and so we're gonna continue that going forward, at least through August, and likely into September as far as any changes. If I change the policy, uh, I will make a announcement here in front of council in a public forum, so it is, uh, understood. You'll have input into that as the council members, uh, and so we'll have all that going forward. But again, no, uh, late fees and no shut-offs. Next slide. So with that, as every, through now, through the end of August, through every due date that we have associated with a billing cycle, we're gonna upgun the lobby to have more personnel there, both behind the window and then out front on the, on the table, uh, as those go. And if we have to flex additional dates and personnel to meet the demand, we'll do so. This is the number one priority for the city staff, uh, even more so than Hurricane and only, uh, response as we've seen here over the last month or two. So I know you probably have some questions, but I'll go ahead and pause for council feedback.
One question I have is, I want to say it again a little slower. So the reason, in case citizens ask, they're getting two bills, or it's not for the same month, it's just we're now beginning to get it caught up. So let's say the two bills, one may be for, uh, June, and one is for July. But they may be getting at the same time.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so, um, and one thing that's very helpful is the service dates are on those bills. So they can see, um, if they get the two bills in the mail, and they could be the same amount, um, but the service dates will be different. Um, and again, like, our, our cycle two customers did not receive a bill in April. And our cycle one customers did not receive a bill in the month of May. So tho- those got caught up, and now they're getting two bills in the same month, but they're, they're, um, for different service dates. And so they'll look at their service dates, like, they can see that.
Are we still looking to replace Clover? What's, what's going on there?
I was like, could you repeat the question, Councilman?
Are we still looking to replace Clover and, and kinda what is going on with that situation?
So we're not, the, the problem that we're trying to solve most immediately, Councilman, is making sure we're on the right billing cycle and the timeline. Um, we do have challenges with both Five Servant Clover, uh, and also with GovSense because those three elements have to talk to each other, and they have a device called a web hook, which, you know, pulls that information out. Um, I would say that when we come up for a contract rebid, that I would most be inclined to do something different than we're currently doing. Uh, and we're starting to look at some of the numbers associated with that. But the cost of breaking that contract and then going into a different contract. So for example, with PayPal, uh, which I know is GovSense's, you know, request at this point in time, uh, that's a high cost. That's several hundred thousand dollars, uh, to break that contract to do so. And, you know, despite having, you know, one major hiccup and one minor hiccup, you know, with the last 30 days, our sense of things is that Clover's been stable. Uh, we've not had any missing, uh, utility payments that have gone, you know, into the bank, so to speak, but then not reflect on the, on the, on the bills. So currently, you know, the, the focus of the finance staff, along with GovSense, has been to make sure that we have works and is on time. And we'll certainly continue to assess, you know, whether or not it is worthwhile. And as we get closer to that contract date, uh, if we run into continual problems with Clover, it may be worthwhile for us just to bite the bullet and change out early, uh, but I wouldn't make that recommendation today.
Thank you, sir.
So if you have any questions from the council, that's all I have from the floor, from the staff today.
All right, I only got two announcements I'm gonna make, so anything you got, anybody got?
Mr. Clifford, were you going to give a, um, country club update? That was it?
He said he was gonna do that in August, once-
Oh, in August. I do have a brief comment on that, though, for your update. There are a number of trees that were down from Hurricane lean on the Country Club property. Are the removal of those trees, along with the debris they're cleaning up now?
Uh, short answer is no, Councilman. There's, if there are trees that were knocked down in the Country Club property, like say on the back nine, so to speak, that was not part of where the debris fields were, were put. Uh, those were not, uh, picked up because it's considered wild, you know, kind of wild space. And so at the end of the day, we don't have any particular use at the moment for those. So those have not been, uh, picked up.
I wanna take a minute and thank Mr. Zir. Uh, pound volunteers got their new documents this week. And I know this has been like a highly emotional issue, but I really appreciate the work you put into those documents. They look good. Uh, pound volunteers are back doing what they wanna do and what they love, and that, that means a lot to them. Thank you so much.
Very good. Uh, I'm just gonna make two announcements. Uh, if you don't already know, Lieutenant Robert Velasco has, is gonna be our next fire captain. And Captain Williams retires in the near future, and I just think that's a, um, a wonderful choice, chief. Uh, really excited about, Captain Velasco will do just an incredible job. Um, two, I'm assuming these are our dispatchers, Felicia Barfield and Whitley Smith. Both attended a critical suicide intervention class, again, at the Criminal Justice Academy. Our folks continuing to, to grow and learn. And last, our assistant city administrator, J.D. McCauley, was selected to be on the ICMA Government Affairs and Policy Committee for a term of three years. And they only take the most highly qualified candidates, it's a big deal, to represent ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association, so it's a big deal. So congratulations, Mr. McCauley, on that. And with that, we stand adjourned.